圣洁奉献这是分为两部分的祈祭 1至7章的章节 然后是神职人的审判 在8至9章 因为耶诞和耶路撒冷新被审判的神职人不做得对他们死了即使如此我是圣洁的有绝对的区分 那什么是圣洁的，什么是不圣洁的 那是什么干净的，和不是干净的 所以我会给你们一些客观课程不是感染性皮肤疾病是你的心中产生的东西但是它肮脏所以然后我们准备谈论我们已经谈到通往圣洁之路我会稍后把它投影出来现在我们要谈论通往圣洁之路所以我们将看到圣洁行为将看到圣洁的神职人圣洁的节日所以 1至15章 通往圣洁之路而这条路就是救赎然后通往圣洁之路如何度过这一切它意味着什么这是真正的《旧约》的问题答案他们会给出所以我的罪孽可以被赦免而我可以去天堂 好吧，这里有问题 第二个问题是代词这不是关于我与我这是错误的问题 是的，十字是答案 但这是错误的问题问题就是这个我们会详细地谈论不这不会有效所以我们将会做什么通过识别和接受他所做的 provision 如我们之前说过在尝试表达这个想法时上帝提供了路 他提供了路，所以那些想在 covenant 中生活的人可以 19到24章 是 covenant 然后没有 chronological 的顺序我们有土著 covenant 的目标而那就是 tabernacle 我们想享受他的存在 但是问题是，如何 如何人们可能生活和上帝我已经多次强调了这一点我再次想强调这一点这不是一种我可以做我想做的任何事然后给上帝一四分之一并完成它 不，这个系统 这个系统意思要享受他的 fellowship 的所有人但是他们的人性中再次 我们说，哦，我的天 这太 demanding 了 好吧，让我们这样来看 癌症 ward 的患者级的等级是多少 100% 这不是好消息你的太空服需要有多少 integrity 100% 一个扣子，然后你就死了 这也是一样的 好吧，上帝 是的，我爱你 是的，我想服从你 但是，但是上帝 你的完美 上帝说，没关系 我会创造一条路想让我满意想享受与我 fellowship 的24小时每天7天一周 这就是这一切的意义他们没有为 covenant 做牺牲他们通过恩典进入了 covenant 纯粹的恩典而他们可以在 covenant 中存活因为上帝已经做了 provision 好但是这需要是投降 啊，不 我是那个我知道最善良的男人我从来没杀人我从来没犯罪我可能说了个谎言现在和过去 但是当然，这不是什么 我总是喜欢我听到的这句话不加入它你会毁掉它是的是的每一天的每一个时刻但是你听到人们谈论着 哦，那个血液 theology 血液到处都是 不，让我们有一点理性地 theology 好吧，上帝计划的方式不是这样的 上帝制定的不是这样的我会接受我需要救赎然后我会接受他的 provision 对于救赎他是王我会叫您的注意力神谕对摩斯说在亚伦的两个儿子死后他们 approaching 神谕的时候死了回到那个情况 那里，在10章 在他们的审判周所以我们现在会回到现在 现在注意，首先在2句 你的兄弟亚伦走到最圣的地方否则他会死这是投降的事情你这样做是我的方式哦不是我的方式不我的方式注意它说什么哪儿 在上面，对吗 在救赎的覆盖之上我会在一会儿再说有一些人会说包子 这是最初的2:4 2个 cubits 乘以4个 cubits 包子 而记住，这个词意味着 arc 那是16:11 英文单词 这听起来不太好，称之为 covenant 包子但是这就是是盒子在里面写着 covenant 的证据有一些人说而看起来是原来帝王他们的翅膀在那个方向上趴在柱子上在 Solomon 的寺庙看起来是我很难画得很好飞机面向外面但是我们认为在 throne 上你只是尝试记住这是真正的 idolatry 这是我们被告诉的但是副置语非常重要什么是副置语不是 on，而是 over 他不是坐在这个位置上，作为他的 throne 再次，你会得到同样的事情 人们会说，哦，哦 他们真的不是那些不是真的 idols 他们站在他们上面 我对他说，尊敬地，狗肉 所以这里我会出现在不是 on 包子但是覆盖上副置语有很多不同 现在，关于 被覆上的包子上有一个盖子而盖子和帝王视作成一个物体盖子被称为 kippur 现在，这很可能 simply 意味着覆盖我们会在一会儿看到或许这就是它的意思但是记住 对不起，不是 t，是 r kpr 是我们在这里经历的所有词我会覆盖你的罪孽每次你看到救赎实际的词是覆盖所以是只是盖子还是覆盖的地方 Martin Luther 当他做他的德语翻译时 翻译，我不能给你德语的词 但他翻译德语说的那个慈悲的座位好吧他是一个好人而我认为有理由相信这不是只是覆盖是覆盖的地方内部是 covenant 代表而 covenant 代表在上帝说话他们打破了 covenant 五周后他们打破它而他们从今天开始就打破了它他们用血誓言上帝会击毙我如果我打破一项命令他们把我撕成了小块 如果你是正义的，你得杀他们 你知道它还是不是，那是 drops 血说父亲 covenant 是满足的血血在覆盖的地方救赎的地方但是上帝对亚伦说 你不能来这里，只要你愿意 那是什么 上帝说什么，当他这么说 我已经让你们轻松地离开在过去的几次会议中 他是上帝，是的，这很好 好，是的，是的 我觉得重点是他是救世主我们会做他的方式或者它不会发生他是救世主不是我们现在我们注意到非常明确的说明那 尤其是4句 他要穿上神圣的 linen tunic 与 linen 下衣在身体旁边他要系 linen 被子，穿上 linen 被子这是神圣的装备所以有些人认为真的这可能是唯一一次那个完整的 regalia 被穿上这对我来说是不幸的我想每天都看到但是或许或许这是唯一一次因为我们 later 在章节中会被告诉圣洁的他要取下那些东西留在那里然后穿上其他的装备出去完成仪式很有趣 好，这个仪式 在 agricultural 年的最后 那里，agricultural 年在 November 开始这有点像这里冬季小麦你种在 October 的尾端 November 的开始然后早雨来了并导致麦子生长继续在 December、January sometime 在 February 中间最晚的雨来了而 harvest 季节开始了对我们来说 约似5月15日 那是 barley 然后在 June 来到小麦然后夏天你有 olive figs 也有然后夏天的尾端 August、September 你有 grapes 而所以这个事件发生在今天所谓的 High Holy Day 你有 trumpets 的 feast 我们会在 later 的会议中再谈 trumpets 的 feast 是 Rosh Hashanah 意味着头那是 rosh hashanah 年年的头所以这是 New Year's Day 在 agricultural calendar 上 New Year's Day 在宗教 calendar 上是在 April 的 Passover 但是这是 agriculture 而最终是 civil calendar 所以这是 trumpets 第一个月的头 Yom Kippur 救赎日 在那个月的10日 而我希望我在这里说过或许不是因为以色列人使用 lunar calendar calendar 是一直移动的所以什么是 Rosh Hashanah 好吧 sometime 从 September 中间到 October 中间每三年你加一个月 你有一个13个月的年 每19年 你又加一个月以让月亮和太阳重新匹配而所以这就是我们可以说的 人们说，为什么圣诞节会移动 因为 Passover 会移动然后 5天后 Yom Kippur 来到 tabernacles 是一个很好的词，用于 tents 这是 tents 的 feast 他们住在 tents 回忆那些在 wilderness 中的日子 而那是7天 所以去一个 Jewish school Brandeis 因为我们刚刚开始了学期 有10天假期 如果你有良好的组织 看看29句 在7个月的10日 你必须这是 NIV，它说 deny 自己伊布语说 afflict 自己不做任何工作这是 Bible 命令 fasting 的唯一时候 我必须告诉你们，我对 fasting 有点不太了解因为太频繁我觉得它是一种试图扭曲上帝的手臂 上帝，没下雨 哦，我的天 我们得下雨我们做什么 好吧，我们宣布一个 fasting 日 大问题，上帝不在乎你饿不饿 现在如果你加上 repentance to fasting 那是另一个故事现在在 Bible 有几次人们宣称 fasting 但是这是一次上帝宣称 fasting 这里 interesting 的事情是当牧民在哭泣因为 vegetation 上帝已经死了所以我们得给他们一个好的葬礼而我经常思考这就是 wake 传统开始的地方当你哭你喝了一杯酒这是牧民做的事但是 Hebrews 在哭为了一个完全不同的原因他们在哭 Here again, two people doing the same thing are not necessarily doing the same thing. A day to afflict yourselves. A day to remember. If God were not gracious to us, we would be sinners. God, we're so sorry. So sorry, we've done stuff that defiled your name. So sorry, we've done stuff that broke your heart. So sorry. What do they do? Again, if you look carefully at this chapter, you recognize that what they're doing is removing the accumulated uncleanness that has contaminated them and the tabernacle, and the priests, and the altar. This is almost completely about, oh God, what we've done has defiled you, defiled your house, defiled the instruments of sacrifice. Have mercy on us. Have mercy on us. We have very little consciousness of this today. Very little. God ought to be really happy to have us on his side. He wouldn't get much done at all without us. No. No. My behavior has profaned your name. My behavior has made you look little and helpless and unholy. Have mercy upon me, oh Lord. Have mercy. I've said it before, I'll say it again. Sacrifice is not a means of manipulating God. It is a God-given means whereby we may demonstrate what our real heart attitudes are. So, let's look at the service of the day. As I said a moment ago, it may be that the priest only wore the full holy regalia on this day. Don't know for sure. He begins by slaughtering his own bull, the bull that he brought. "He must first bring a young bull for a sin offering and a ram for a burnt offering." Verse 6, "He is to offer the bull for his sin offering to make atonement covering for himself and his household." So that's where it starts. Starts with the priest making an offering for himself. "He takes that blood," let's back up there a minute, "he takes that blood into the Holy of Holies." This is verse 11. "He shall bring the bull for his own sin offering to make atonement for himself and his household. He is to slaughter the bull for his own sin offering." Verse 12, "He is to take a censer full of burning coals from the altar before the Lord." That's the incense altar that stands right before the veil separating the Holy of Holies. "And two handfuls of finely ground fragrant incense," the kind that he gave them very clear instructions for how to make, "and take them behind the curtain." He's to put the incense on the fire before the Lord. So he's got his, his censer with some burning coals of the incense that had been on the altar. And now, he sprinkles this new incense on it, and the place fills with smoke. "He is to put the incense on the fire before the Lord, and the smoke of the incense will cover the atonement cover above the tablets of the covenant law, so that he will not die." "He is to take some of the bull's blood and with his finger sprinkle it on the front of the covenant box?" Excuse me, "on the front of the atonement cover," mm-hmm, "along the front edge of it." "Then he shall sprinkle some of it with his finger seven times on the atonement cover." Yes. The covenant is satisfied. Then, he goes back out, and he slaughters the first goat for a sin offering for the people, and take its blood behind the curtain and do with it as he did with the bull's blood. "He shall sprinkle it on the atonement cover and in front of it." In this way, now get this, he will make atonement for the most holy place. Wait a minute, this thing, this place is automatically holy, huh? This is where God's covenant box is. This is where God appears, over the box. No. Only God is always and everywhere holy. And even instruments dedicated to him are capable of being made unclean. Wow. He will make atonement for the most holy place because of the uncleanness and the transgression of the Israelites, whatever their sins have been. He's to do the same for the tent of meeting, the whole structure. No one is to be in the tent of meeting from the time Aaron goes in to make atonement in the most holy place until he comes out, having made atonement for himself, his household, and the whole community of Israel. Then he shall come to the altar that's before the Lord and make atonement for it. He'll take some of the bull's blood and some of the goat's blood and put it on all the horns of the altar. Again, nothing except God is holy in itself. Up to this point, he has been dealing with the effects of sin, defilement, uncleanness. Now then, the sins themselves are put on this goat. This is verse 20. "When Aaron has finished making atonement for the most holy place, the tent of meeting, and the altar, he shall bring forward the live goat. He is to lay both hands on the head of the live goat and confess over it." All, and the three key words for offenses against God in the Old Testament are, in English, translated, sin, iniquity. We don't have a good English word for this one that is so totally archaic, and trespasses. Those three words. Now, Hebrew has almost a dozen words for sin. Sin's a big thing. But these are the three that are most commonly used. As I've said to you in the past, this one is both potentially intentional and unintentional. It has the idea of missing a target. And you can do that intentionally, or you can do it unintentionally. This one, as best we know, are the objective consequences of sin. You may think it was nothing, but something has come into existence as a result of your offending God, and it's gonna have to be dealt with. All of us who have been in relationships understand this. "Oh, I didn't mean that." Yeah, maybe you didn't, but it's out there now, isn't it? Something's gonna have to be done about it. And this one then is intentional crossing of a line. And we're told here that Aaron is to confess all of these as they relate to the people of Israel. And then they send the goat out, and he carries them away. I think in particular, that's expressing this sense. Something has happened, something has broken relationships, and that something is gonna have to be removed. Now, it's never as easy as putting it on the back of a goat. But there it is. In Jesus, he has carried our sins outside the camp. So he's not only dealt with the uncleanness that has resulted and made us clean in God's presence, he's also dealt with those objective consequences that have to be dealt with. Yes?
Is that connected in Ephesians where Jesus was crucified outside the gate, or outside?
Outside the camp, yes, yes.
Same thing, that's amazing.
Yes. Yeah, you would think that Paul had read Leviticus if he didn't know better. So only now, only now, does he offer a burnt offering as a symbol of our total dedication and the sin offering? This is verse 27. "The bull and the goat for the sin offerings whose blood was brought into the most holy place to make atonement must be taken outside the camp." So the, the whole routine that we saw earlier on, certain parts are burned on the altar, other parts are taken outside the camp, burned, some of the meat is given to the priest. So we're following all those patterns here as we come to that conclusion. Okay. Anything you want to talk about on 16 before we look at 17? Yes?
Whatever your version says, smoke in the heaven up there. Mine says cloud, not English, American standard. Which is it, cloud or smoke? I think it's cloud or smoke.
The answer is yes. There's a single word in Hebrew that means smoke and cloud. It's a cloud of smoke. I think there's no question that it is, the incense is making a cloud of smoke. So it's, but I say this to students all the time who, who really don't believe me. Hebrew, the Hebrew Bible has a very small vocabulary. If you're gonna learn to read Arabic, you gotta have an 8,000-word working vocabulary. I'm told it's similar for Japanese. For English, you gotta have at least a 5,000-word. You can read the Hebrew Bible without a dictionary if you have a 2,000-word vocabulary. But what that means is, every Hebrew word of significance, not the, and, and those, but every Hebrew word of significance has a large pool of potential connotations. And that means you gotta look at how it's being used very, very carefully. Okay, that's free. What's chapter 17 doing here? It's all about these kind of bizarre things. If you're gonna make a sacrifice, you gotta do it at the tabernacle. Why? "Because you will be guilty of bloodshed," says verse 4. "They have shed blood." Blood can only be poured out in God's presence in the tabernacle. You can't pour it out someplace else. I wonder what that's about? And then, "Let my face against any Israelite or any foreigner residing among them who eats blood, and I will cut them off from the people." And then, if you, this is not a sacrifice, if you're hunting and you kill an animal, you must drain out the blood and cover it with earth. What in the world is this all about? Verse 11. And I like the Hebrew here again, is the problem we were just talking about. "Because the nefesh that is in the body is in the blood." Now, this is NIV, it says, "The life of the body is in the blood." I think that's way too shallow. Nefesh, I don't remember what the King James does here, but I wouldn't be at all surprised if they don't say, "The soul of the body is in the blood." Because that's what that word can be translated as. It can be translated as soul, it can be translated self, it can be translated person. This is the something that makes us alive. All right, soul, yeah, yeah. The, the life force. The life force. The person who inhabits the body is in the blood. Spill the blood out and this person goes away. Oswald's body will still be here, but the person will be gone. In other words, there's some mystery in the blood. Doesn't say the breath. Stop breathing, you're dead. But no, there's something about the unique personality. The life of a creature, the nephesh of a creature is in the blood, and I have given it to you to make atonement for yourselves on the altar. The blood is the nephesh that makes atonement. Yeah, yeah. So this chapter is not just accidental, in many ways, it's the wrap-up, which explains what has this all been about? Sin is a matter of life and death. And it's not going to be dealt with simply by a little present. It's not going to be dealt with by saying, well, let's forget it. It's a matter of life and death. Here is the Bible on one screen. Chapter 2 of the book. "If you eat the fruit of that tree, you will die." What did God make the creation for? He made it for life. And the snake was sure he had won when he has injected death into God's creation. So it is no accident that the first thing that happens after they leave the garden is murder, death. And it exponentially multiplies so that Lamech can say, anybody kills me, there are going to be 70 people killed to avenge me. Like cancer. What are the plagues teaching us? The plagues are teaching us, anything you worship in place of God is death. The Nile is the mother of Egypt, she is the source of life. No, she isn't. She is blood, blood shed, blood stinking. And where does it all end? The firstborn, the source, the source of our future, the source of ongoing life, will die. Worship anything other than Yahweh, and you are worshiping death. Our culture desperately trying to avoid death. It's not going to happen. It's not going to happen. The average on death is very, very limited, one per customer. But, but, "When I see the blood, I will pass over you." Death can somehow be thwarted by death? By the death of an innocent animal? Who knew? The nephesh of the flesh is in the blood? The nephesh that sins will die. Without the shedding of blood, there is no remission of sin. "These are they who have died in the great tribulation, and they have washed their robes in the blood of the lamb." What did we say? There's power in the blood, did we, did we say something about that? "I was dead, and see, I am alive forevermore." That's the Bible, right there. So what can we say about atonement? It grows out of a divine human need. We need atonement, but God wants us, and He can't have us unless we are atoned for, unless our sin is covered. It's a divine human need. God wants us. It's God-initiated. As we've said a couple of different ways tonight, God's said, this is the way it's done. I'm going to make a way, I'm going to make a way so that those who want to live in covenant with me can. It's God-provided. It is substitutionary. Death for death, life for life. It removes the consequences of sin. Oh, bless the Lord. Oh, praise God. And it rests upon repentance, acceptance, sometimes restitution, and faith. I believe that if with sincerity I truly repent of my sin, I accept God's provision, all is dealt with, praise His name. And finally, it results in reconciliation, at one mind, communion, we could say fellowship here, communion/fellowship, dependence, and indwelling, atonement. What is the way to holiness? The way to holiness is atonement. What do you want to say? Other than good night? Nancy?
So, but holiness also includes choice, isn't it?
Holiness also includes choice, absolutely. That's where I said the acceptance thing comes in. I have to accept God's provision and God's instructions. And that's what's going to happen now in the rest of the book. Okay, okay, holiness is now a real possibility. I can walk with God. What does that look like? And it's going to involve choice, absolutely.
Your holiness your goal.
Yeah, yeah. I'll, I'll say this, again, I've said it several times. It's fascinating that God calls the Corinthians saints. Huh? These people? And in the next verse says, "who are called to be holy." Yeah. By being brought into connection with God, you now are holy. But you've got to live that out. All right, anything else? Let's pray. Heavenly Father, praise your holy name. Thank you. Thank you that in the blood of Jesus, not the blood of sheep and goats, not the blood of bulls and rams, but in the blood of your only Son, you have found a way to deliver us from our uncleanness and make us clean in your presence. You've found a way to prevent us from defiling your name. Praise you, glory to your name. Help us, oh Lord. Help us to live with a burning desire to glorify your name, to demonstrate your atonement in our lives. In your name, amen.